No, I mean, please rise for the flesh.
What allegiance do the United States of America and to the Republic of our which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Go call.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of August 21st, 2018.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have no bed openings tonight, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we'll move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one, 4th district.
Receive filed plan specifications and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, first and 4th districts.
Receive filed plan specification and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, 5th district.
Same motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair, item number one, 1st and 4th districts.
Receive filed county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 2nd district.
Receive filed county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion through item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, 1st district.
Receive filed county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legis-
Is that the same one as the add-ons?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Skip them because we have a correction on the add-ons.
Drop, in order business, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, drop. Please drop.
The motion is to drop, and that will be, uh, so ordered.
Item number seven, 6th district.
Receive filed county council be requested or directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Same motion for number eight.
So ordered for number eight as well.
Item number nine, 7th district.
Receive filed county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and same motion through item 11.
So ordered. Uh, please read the add-ons.
Chair, um, under other communications, item number one.
To raises.
Oh. Receive filed county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 3rd district. Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number three, 6th district.
Receive filed county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
Uh, so ordered.
Same, uh, motion for number four.
So ordered number four as well.
Item number five, 1st district.
Receive filed county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number six, 2nd district.
See file and the resolution be added to the legislative packet for this agenda, and that will be the order.
And under reported special committees, Mr. Chair, item number seven, 6th district.
Receive filed and the interim report be adopted as submitted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, report county executive. Now, report. Uh, report special committees.
Please hold on the order business.
So ordered. Public forum.
We have 14 speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Please, uh, come forward to the podium when your name is called, and, uh, give us your name and address for the record. Adjust the microphone so we can capture all of your comments, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes. First speaker.
First speaker this evening is Joseph Hoffman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My, my name is Joseph Hoffman. I live at 6601 Higgy Road in Afton. I'm here to talk about the proposed rezoning of the property at Tower T from commercial sporting facility to residential. A few weeks ago, Michael Burton brought up the possibility of St. Louis County purchasing that property and using it for a, a county park that would have golf and batting cages, and this is an excellent idea. This would provide Afton with a park that would pay for itself with the fees collected from golf and batting cages. Afton is one of the most densely populated areas in St. Louis County. A 4,480 residents per square mile is already well over twice the county average. Afton has very little in the way of green space or parks. There's a serious need for green space and parks for residents. Tower T met much of that need in a unique setting that provided for variety of outdoor and park-like activities. Tower T is now closed, but the Afton area still needs that, green space, still needs that park. Indeed, that sporting facility is important not just to Afton, but it's around in communities too, such as Crestwood and Webster Groves and Sunset Hills and Lee May. This area of South County is already highly developed. This growing area is much more in need of recreational opportunities and green space provided by a park like this than for yet more houses in an already crowded area. Indeed, Afton is already getting more crowded. McBride is currently building 38 homes very close by on McKenzie Avenue on McKenzie Road across from Afton High School. McBride implants the building of 158 homes on 27 acres. Uh, that's almost six homes per acre, which is pretty crowded. That's just a bit too much. Afton already has, after adding so many residents in such a small area, has a negative impact on the quality of life. It increases traffic flow on already crowded roads, its strange utilities, it increases water drainage problems on New Hampshire and East Yorkshire roads when we get heavy rains. It emphasizes the need that Afton has for a park like Tower T in that location. We need that park, that green space, that outdoor recreational facility far more than we need more houses. Afton's already crowded enough. So please don't rezone the area property, property at Tower T from commercial sporting facility to residential. Please look out for the good of our community, for the good of the people in the Afton area, and please vote against rezoning Tower T, and please consider purchasing the property and making it a park with golf and batting cages. The fees from the golf and batting cages could pay for the cost of, of the park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe.
Next speaker is Diane Perry.
Good evening. I don't know if this is where I should have come, came to, but I was sent here because I'm looking for a proclamation, and it would be in Pat Dolan's district, and it would be for Dr. Henry Givens Jr. Thursday, we're renaming a school Steger for Dr. Henry Givens Jr. He was my grade school teacher at Douglas Grade School, and my parents went to Douglas Grade School and high school, came out of there. So I'm coming to ask for a proclamation for him. I don't know if this is where I should have addressed the two, but I was told to come here.
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, we'd be happy to do it if you send us the information. Uh, my assistant's right there. Can give you his-
Okay.
-contact information, and if you give us the pertinent information, Dr. Givens, and we'd be happy to get a resolution. I would bring it to the council and just let us know.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Lisa Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. I'm here, I'm Lisa Hall, 8945 Provo Lane, 63123. And a few weeks ago, I had emailed council members, uh, because of that, that I would like to see Tower T considered as possible St. Louis County park. Uh, the only thing I will add is the possibility of it being used as a permanent venue for the Afton Days Festival, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Mike LeBlanc.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I represent 5,500 people here in St. Louis County, 3,500 veterans, and 2,000 family members, in addition to over 300,000 veterans that exist in our area. And we'd all like to say thank you for taking the actions for the sale of Sylvan Springs Park. We're looking forward to a great future of 10 years in Sylvan Springs Park. We've used it for many events in the past, and we will continue to do so. This past weekend, I went out to Jefferson Barracks. I visited the three guys who started this journey with me. All of them were smiling. They say thank you, too. The one guy left behind, a 95-year-old World War II vet, I called him up, and I said, Pete, looks like we're at the finish line. He says, well, Mike, me, H, Andy, and George will be sitting there waiting for you. In typical World War II humor, he says, unless you kick the bucket before me. So I said, Pete, we'll make it happen. And lastly, I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you. Another great event is coming up. We are commemorating and memorializing the 100th anniversary of Armistice Day, the war to end all wars. 11/11/1918. So at 11/11 at Sylvan Springs Park, in addition to many other activities going on in the park that day, we will read the 116,512 names of those who didn't come home. We will have 11 reading stations, and we'd like to invite every one of you to come and be at a reading station. Lastly, I would like to really applaud the Parks Department because they just do a wonderful job. Whenever we ask them for something, they come through big. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kira Braxton.
Good evening. My name is Kira Braxton. I reside at 19 Connolly Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. I just wanted to come up for my coworkers in Corrections Medicine to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, for this add-on, uh, tonight, a letter from the county executive's office approving, um, the requested raises that we fought for almost a year to receive. Um, I just want to let you all know that your labor and work and all of the conversations and debates about it, we don't take for granted. Um, in the beginning, we didn't know what to expect, but we knew a wrong had happened, and it was our opportunity and our responsibility to right a wrong, and we came to you all for helping. You did. We do appreciate, um, County Executive Stanger in his absence coming back to the bargaining table with you all and presenting you all with some real viable options, and, um, we are very pleased with what you all have done for us. We really, 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 truly appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Kira.
Mr. Chair, I can't read the next name. I think it's Nicole, and the last name starts with a K. Mr. Chair, if we can ask the speaker to spell her name for us.
How y'all doing?
Thanks.
Um, I'm here advocating-
Nicole, could you tell us your name again and spell it?
I am. I'm here representing the Center for Peace and with Ms. Claire P. Daughtry, and my name is Nicola, N-I-C-O-L-A, and last name is Kea, K-E-A. Okay. I'm here with the Center for Peace of Kenlock Foundation. I am here to say that St. Louis County needs a citizen review board. We've worked with over 500 families, excuse me, within the last four years, um, out here. We advocate for most of them. Most of the complaints of the, uh, are injustice, racial profiling, and, and we would like to see a people, community forum for us. So please give us our own citizen review board. A lot of our communities are adopting that, that part of this policy, so we're trying to do also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Isora Liggins.
Good evening, everybody. Isora Liggins, 5320 Bermuda Road. I would like to just start off by, uh, saying, uh, I'm sorry to Councilwoman, uh, Erby, if she misunderstood at our meeting last week. I was not trying to be argumentative. I'm just a little frustrated in all the years that have went by, and nothing has been done. And so I just felt I owed you that apology. Uh, second, I would like to let you know that, um, I am still seeking the same assistance from the prosecuting attorney's office, and, um, I would like to know how did you, the whole council feel about his road trip and how demeaning he was toward African-Americans? Or are you aware of that incident in Oregon? Anybody? Nobody had anything? Or do anybody know about that?
I'm aware.
Oh, you're aware of how demeaning he was toward the African-Americans. So he does that in St. Louis County as well as abroad when he goes out. To me, that's disturbing, and I hope it would be kind of disturbing to everybody here in St. Louis County. And I'm still requesting a meeting with that office. Anything that this council can do by way of writing a recommendation would be very much appreciated. And I would like to reiterate that when I was here, I'm concerned about the court system also, and how biased they still are toward African-Americans that come toward, uh, them for justice. Thank you.
Next speaker is Al Katzenberger.
My name is Al Katzenberger. I'm with the 10th District. I'm the liaison for the Jefferson Barracks, uh, and I'm also a member of the Knights of Rizal. Uh, I'm the current commander of the Knights of Rizal, and my issues are that I'm very thankful that you approved this idea of, of selling the Sylvan Springs. I'm gonna be 80 years old next year, so I'm gonna be in the timeline for this, uh, for this. Okay. Uh, one of the things I want you to do is that right across the road, over 255, there's a cemetery. It's got 18,000 burials. Uh, Mr. Wayne Kennedy, who was once the park director, uh, talked about this, and I have documents of his, what he said about this property. It cannot be built on, and it cannot be quarried under. It's 22 acres of ground. Uh, it's sacred ground. It's actually a national registered site. Okay? Uh, one of the reasons why I'm very concerned about this property, too, it has veterans there from Benton Park. Benton Park during the Civil War was a military base, and there was a died there, and there was a Potter Field there, but they moved the graves into, uh, into this, uh, area, what they called the quarantine station, and it later became Coke Hospital. I'm also concerned about, because I'm a member of the Knights of Rizal, during the World's Fair, the Filipinos were very much abused, and of course, they caught disease, and 15 of them died during the fair, and there's Filipinos buried at that site. They got smallpox, and were taken to the quarantine station. Uh, this is a very important piece of ground. It's got weeds as tall as the ceiling. It can't be excavated or anything, but it can have choppers go through it and knock all those weeds down and made it to a passive park, very similar to Mark, St. Marcus Park at King's Highway in Graboyes. And you could probably get the assistance of the state Parks Department to do this, because that's how they did it in the city. So please, 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 think of this, of this, uh, thing, and think of the people. The atrocities that went on at that hospital and at the, on those grounds, there were sinkholes in that area, and it actually buried people in layers, 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 layers. Another site that you should think about is, is up in, uh, Bella Fountain. There's a cemetery up there. 60 or more burials are up there. The county did an excavation, ground penetration. There's probably 90 burials up there, between 60 and 90 burials up there. They should be moved, and they should be the first mass grave in the new cemetery. This should be done. They should not be staying up there. The Daughters of the American Revolution moved most of them in 1904 down to Jefferson Barracks, but of course, they didn't have the wherewithal with ground penetration equipment to find all of them. But recently, the county did a survey of that, and they know there's bodies there, and they should be excavated and moved into the new cemetery. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeannie Savell.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Savell. My address is, um, I'm sorry, 2331 Seven Pines Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63146. Um, chairman and council members, thank you for your efforts in, uh, expanding the, uh, expanding the Jefferson Cemetery into Sylvan Park. A special thanks to, um, Mark Harder for his, his work and his, um, research and efforts over the last five years. Um, I am a military support advocate. I'm a military outreach coordinator for the employer support of the Garden Reserve. Um, also, um, I'm sorry, um, vice president of family programs for the Association of the United States Army. I'm on the Board of Heroes Care, Visions for Vets. I'm a founder of the STL Veteran Support Network, and I'm a regional ambassador for Student Veterans of America. Um, my father is a World War, was a World War II vet, was buried at Jefferson Barracks Cemetery, sorry, uh, last October. And I have an uncle who is a Korean veteran who is within that timeline of, um, being able to be buried there. And, um, I, I feel that our Korean veterans and our Vietnam veterans should have the opportunity to be buried there. It's a beautiful cemetery, and, um, it's a, it's a gem of St. Louis, and, um, I, I thank you for your vote and encourage you to expand here in St. Louis. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tim Day.
My name is Tim Day. I live at 7329 Nottingham in 63119. I'm here to talk about Tower T. It's been roughly two months since Tower T shut down. Uh, we still haven't seen any rezoning plans. Um, I'm not sure why the property had to be shut down prematurely before it was, the rezoning was approved, but be that as it may, uh, it seems like the public is, aside from showing up to these meetings, and I guess a recent, um, primary election, relatively has little recourse and little say in this matter. So we're gonna keep showing up to these meetings. Uh, I go to lots of different clients, and I'm around town, and people see me, and they, they, I don't even really know these people that well, and they're asking me, what's the latest with Tower T? What's, what's gonna happen? And I tell them that, you know, at some point, there's gonna be a, a rezoning proposal, and we'll get 15 or so days' notice, and then we're all gonna, we're all gonna show up to that meeting and speak, uh, en masse, and I hope that the people that have been following this issue over the last year will remember all of us that have come up here and spoke on it, and you will go with what is best for the residents of St. Louis County. Thank you.
Next speaker is Matt Connolly.
Thank you. Um, I was gonna, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, the Chapter 100 and Save a Lot, but I think that ship has sailed, um, and whether or not Save a Lot stays in St. Louis County or leaves the state of Missouri and takes another corporate headquarters and 500 well-paying jobs is totally up to them at this point. But, um, one thing I would, uh, like, uh, for the council to consider is, um, speaking not only as the city administrator in St. Louis County, but as a county resident, is to schedule a work session or something with the Missouri Partnership, which is the premier economic development entity for the state of Missouri, and get a better understanding of what turning economic development, uh, projects into political, uh, footballs means. Um, the action that was taken by pulling the Chapter 100 at the very last minute has, you know, not my words, uh, other people's words who do this for daily, uh, livelihood, has severely damaged the state of Missouri and St. Louis County's ability to, uh, in the future, to conduct, uh, the necessary task of ensuring that the economy of St. Louis County and the state of Missouri as a whole continues to, uh, succeed. So that's all I have to say. I mean, anything else is pretty much pointless at this point. Thank you.
Matt, I do have one question. On, uh, June 19th, you told us that if we were not ready to move forward, that the city of St. Anne was, and that you had passed two pieces of legislation that night to set the process in motion. Is that no longer the case?
No, councilman, because you guys passed the legislation to send out to the taxing jurisdictions. We got that notice. Uh, we assumed that the St. Louis County was going to finish what they had started. We did not do anything. We heard, we heard nothing for two and a half months from anybody at St. Louis County Council or anything. So we, we did nothing. You know, we're prepared. We reached out again to Save a Lot, but I think at this point, I think that they're pretty much, uh, finished with, uh, negotiating with anybody, so.
Thank you.
Can I, just for the record, I was never asked by anybody, by a chairman, for sure, what my feelings were on this, so I supported Save a Lot coming to Northwest Plaza or anywhere in St. Louis County or staying here, not coming, or staying here, and, um, I was never even questioned about dropping any legislation, so for the record, I did support you being here, or Save a Lot being here in St. Louis County. Just wanted to be known.
Thank you. Councilman Wassinger.
So are you saying that St. Anne is not capable of fulfilling the request for the-
We are cap-, we are capable, but at this, at this point, the ball's in Save, in Save a Lot's court. They had decisions to make, uh, whether or not to order, uh, property, personal property under the tax payment, and I think that, you know, the two and a half months that's gone by since the, the original order was issued by the, by the, uh, council, they assumed everything was good. They did not take any action at that point. We can take the action, and, uh, we have made that clear to them, that we're willing to do so, but at this point, um, I think that they're, as of this afternoon, they were, uh, determining, you know, they had to make some decisions about some much larger decisions, whether or not to order with the Chapter 100, so.
Okay, but you could, the city of St. Anne is capable of re, of issuing the notices and the bonds if, if Save a Lot decides to pursue them.
We are capable. We have, we have offered to sit down with them. Uh, you know, there are some things that we have to, uh, have an agreement with Save a Lot on because there is cost issues to, you know, to do this, and they had already worked all that out with, uh, the county economic council, so those terms would have to be carried over, and, you know, I don't know, I can't speak for Save a Lot if they're willing to do that at this point, because we spent a lot of time and a lot of effort trying to take this forward through the-
I understand. Okay, thank you.
I still didn't hear the answer, though. Is St. Anne capable of doing it? That's what-
Technically, we're capable of doing, but it takes two to tango. So it's up to Save a Lot whether or not they want to come to the table at this point and have a discussion.
But you are willing to do it?
Absolutely. We're willing to do, we're willing to, to do, we've been willing to do it all along. It's a shame that no one could, would have told us that this wasn't gonna work out, because we would have done it.
We never made a commitment, did we?
I don't think so. I think we, uh, we did, uh, publish the taxing notices to let everyone know who's affected, that we were considering the legislation. You know, for the past two months, um, every time we look into what's happening at the Economic Partnership or the Port Authority, um, more questions arise, and it really is premature to act like everything's okay, and we need to just go ahead and, and, um- at the Port Authority, these projects are gonna get extra scrutiny. And I, I hope the city of St. Anne can keep the commitment that they made a couple of months ago. We have lost a couple of months and you're sure we're enthusiastic when you came here before, so we wish you Godspeed in that effort and we hope, we hope you can work something out with Save a Lot. But what's happening at the Port Authority doesn't inspire confidence with me and the council has a lot of questions with how the Partnership is making decisions and, and doing business in St. Louis County.
Again, I would encourage the council as a whole to speak with the state of Missouri, not the County Economic Council. This started at the state level. It's the Missouri Partnership. They're a nonprofit, public-private entity that's been established in the state of Missouri to do exactly what this was intended to do, to keep high-paying, good jobs, corporate headquarters in the state of Missouri. They have no affiliation with, no political affiliation with any, anybody, so, you know, they're kind of a non-partisan entity when it comes to this, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Matt. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Arnie Dino.
My name is Arnie C. A.C. Dinoff and my address is P.O. Box fifteen thirty-five, O'Fallon, Missouri. I live in St. Charles County, but unfortunately, the justice system and a certain judge, Michael D. Burton, doesn't know how to treat citizens with dignity, respect, and understanding. My complaint comes to you for the third week in a row after being treated as a fifth-class, or a fifth-class citizen with inhumane treatment, violation of the Missouri Constitution and the United States Constitution for cruel and unusual punishment, being held as a political prisoner as I ran for the St. Charles County Election Authority Directorship on August seventh of this, of last month, while having a heart attack in the courtroom all over a civil issue of eight hundred and ninety-three dollar transcript fee from the Missouri Eastern District Court of Appeals. I was shackled, handcuffed, and bound to an ambulance gurney and then to the hospital bed. I was treated worse than any dog in St. Louis County, all over eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. Missouri Constitution, Article One, Section Two states that no person shall be imprisoned for death except for non-payment of fines and penalties opposed by law. This was a civil transcript fee, not a fine, not a criminal matter. There were justice officers who were making threats to me while being bound to a hospital bed that needed to be investigated by you, the county council. There were just, justice officers goofing off, thinking it was a big joke, violation of my Health Information and Privacy Accountability Act, known as HIPAA rights. I was forced into signing away rights and documents threatened by county staff, stealing of my property that still hasn't been returned to me to this day, treatment of my family as scum of the world, not notifying or communicating with my family for six days of the seriousness of a heart attack, my condition, testing procedures, decisions that need to be made by me and my family, et cetera, blocking of my name at the hospital, Missouri Baptist, department employees arguing and having words towards emergency room doctors in which county and country police had to be notified to try to settle their arguments, bound to a hospital bed, denied of the right to use a bathroom, numerous violations of Department of County Justice Services standard operating procedures, known as SOPs. Calls replaced to the interim director, Julia Childery, but she didn't want to even care or look into the matter. Clothes were ripped off of me after having surgery by Justice Department employees. They sped me in a small county sedan vehicle down I-64 at ninety miles per hour. What kind of county employee drives a vehicle at ninety miles per hour?
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Arnie, can you?
Yes.
Wrap up your comments.
Not turning on the air cushion, cutting off ventilation with the glass enclosure when the degrees was a hundred degrees outside, making me crawl on a dirty floor with no wheelchair after having surgery and orders from the doctors at Missouri Baptist Hospital. And I'll go into the officers of the Justice Department Services next week. I appreciate you hearing me. I still haven't heard from the county executive's office and I haven't heard from anybody about how you're gonna proceed with a proper and fair investigation. This shouldn't happen to any human being over the one million in population of St. Louis County. Nobody deserves to be treated with this disrespect and violation of the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mitch Wilson.
My name is Mitch Wilson. I'm with Shepherd Funeral Chapel, ninety-two fifty-five Natural Bridge Road. I'm here on behalf of funeral directors in the area and thank you for your support of the sale of property from Sylvan Springs to Jefferson Barracks Veteran Cemetery. On behalf of all the families of veterans and their families that we serve, we thank you for being able to continue having this wonderful cemetery in our civil, county limits so that we can serve them for the next two generations. It is critical for our veterans to have this, this close to our area. It makes getting to the cemetery a timely matter. It, it is a beautiful, fitting tribute for all veterans and their families and we thank you. My father is also buried there and it is an honor and we appreciate you being able to extend that legacy here in St. Louis County. The alternative would be to have to build a state cemetery somewhere else and probably add an hour or two to processions and so forth, so we thank you. I think it makes sense in the honor of the veterans and also just economically, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Don Otto.
Don Otto, seventeen fifty-seven Woodcliff, Jefferson City, Missouri, here again on behalf of the Missouri Funeral Directors and Ambalmers Association, I won't, in support of the Jefferson Barracks expansion. I won't repeat what I mentioned last week or what was already been, been said, but we want to thank you for all the work that you've done on this proposal over the many years that it's taken to get to this point. Coming from Jefferson City, it's easy to get a, not always favorable view of government, to put it tactfully, since you, you live around it all the time. And so, it's, it's very refreshing and nice to see how this council has worked with the Veterans Administration to do something that's not only gonna help the veterans, but with the funds to help the park that really does need that funds to, to become useful for all of the citizens of, of the county in that area. We have a, they're not gonna come up here, speak, take more of your time, but we have a number of people here I wanted to let you know. We have a president of the Missouri Funeral Directors Association, John Moore, represents all of the three hundred-plus funeral homes of our association. We have our president-elect in the back. You can stand up. It's okay. We, and we also have our policy board representative from the association, Chris Roth, from Boke Chapel here in St. Louis County, that is our policy board representative, the National Funeral Directors Association. A lot of people say, ask me when I, when I give interviews and stuff, what, how can funeral directors do what they do? How can they meet with families that are in such distress, so depressing? There are a lot of reasons, but one of them is if a funeral director's done their job right, the people, when they leave you, feel better than when you first met you. And that's an incredible way to make a living. They're not gonna feel great, but you made them feel better. And for our veterans and our veterans' families, one of the key ways that that's been done for generations in the St. Louis area is to be able to bury their military loved one in Jefferson Barracks. And this bill will allow that to continue for many, many more years to come. And so, we thank you for your support.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
This concludes our public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number two eleven, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-four cents from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the cybercrime program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number two twelve, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the multi-jurisdictional drug task force, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number two thirteen, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to accept three grants totaling up to four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-four cents from the Missouri Division of Highway Safety, appropriating same for support of personnel and equipment for traffic law enforcement activities of the Police Department, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number two fourteen, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with ISS Facility Services, Inc., for janitorial services for seven county properties. Bill number two fifteen, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Clifton Larson L.L.P. to audit internal controls and processes of the Children's Service Fund for fiscal years two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen. Bill number two sixteen, introduced by Councilmembers Page, Walton Gray, and Harder, and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with DJM Ecological Services Incorporated for prescribed burn services in three county parks. Bill number two seventeen, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a license agreement with Metropolitan Park and Recreation District and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for construction and maintenance of a trail connected for Grant's Trail, of a trail connector for Grant's Trail. Bill number two eighteen, introduced by Councilmember Wasinger and ordinance, providing for the vacation of two easements located on Lot Ten of Schusler Heights, Districtor James D. Brennan, member of JGB Holdings, LLC. Bill number two nineteen, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray and ordinance, amending St. Louis County zoning ordinance and district maps by changing the boundaries of the C-three Shopping District and the C-eight Plan Commercial District and approving the application and preliminary plans for development and amended development in the C-eight Plan Commercial District of attractive land, subject to conditions and repealing ordinance number eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five as amended and ordinance number twenty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six, PC eleven dash eighteen, Mission Hills Development Company Incorporated, Motor City. Bill number two twenty, introduced by Councilmember Page. Mr. Chair, I understand that other council members may wish to co-sponsor this legislation.
Yes, this is introduced by Councilmember Irby, but I suspect other council members will want to co-sponsor.
We'd like to co-sponsor.
We'll go to Councilmember Page.
Yes.
And Wasinger.
Yes.
Which one is it? Two twenty.
Justice Services.
Justice Services.
The nurses.
Councilmember Dolan.
Please.
Councilmember Tracus.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Harder.
Thank you. So, bill number two twenty, introduced by Councilmembers Irby, Page, Wasinger, Dolan, Tracus, and Harder, and ordinance appropriating the amount of seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars to Proposition P funds from the unappropriated balance of the General Fund for support of the Department of Justice Services and repealing ordinance number twenty-seven thousand, fifty-six. Bill number two twenty-one, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, amending Title Eight, Chapter Eight, sixteen, St. Louis County, revised since nineteen seventy-four, amended Port Authority by adding and enacting one new section, excuse me, chaining to certain acquisitions and sales by the St. Louis County Port Authority.
Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection.
Bill number one thirty-six, introduced by Councilmember Wasinger.
Hold on the order of business, please.
Bill number one thirty-six is held.
Bill number one ninety-one, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Hold on the order of business, please.
Bill number one ninety-one is held.
Bill number one ninety-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page. Mr. Chair, we have a substitute bill.
I'm going to move the original bill. I appreciate the substitute. I spoke to Department of Health today and although there are only two bidders for this contract, it looks like the process was competitive, so I'll support the contract with extensions. I move it, adoption, or move to perfect bill number one ninety-seven.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And bill number one ninety-eight, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Please read the substitute.
Sir. Substitute bill number one for bill number one ninety-eight, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Lee Hard Distributors Missouri, LLC, doing business as Castiarchs for health center pharmacy services for the Department of Public Health.
The substitute limits renewals and asks for this contract to be rebid. In a year, there was only one respondent to the RFP. Move to perfect substitute bill number one for bill, substitute number one for bill number one ninety-eight.
Mr. Chair, do adopt the bill first, the subbill.
Move to adopt the substitute number one for bill number one ninety-eight.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Substitute bill number one for bill number one ninety-eight is adopted. Now, I move to perfect substitute bill number one for bill number one ninety-eight.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Substitute bill number one for bill number one ninety-eight is perfected.
Bill number two oh two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold bill number two oh two. Bill number two oh two will be held.
Bill number two oh three, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move to perfect bill number two oh three.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two oh three is perfected.
Bill number two oh four, introduced by Councilmember Page.
We heard testimony on this in committee and I'm convinced the council members still have questions, so I move to hold bill number two oh four and two oh four will be held.
Bill number two oh six, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number two oh six.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Bill number two oh six is perfected.
Bill number two oh seven, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number two oh seven.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two oh seven is perfected.
Bill number two oh eight, introduced by Councilmembers Irby and Walton Gray.
Please hold. Order of business.
Bill number two oh eight is held.
Bill number two oh nine, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number two oh nine.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two oh nine is perfected.
Bill number two ten, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember Dolan.
Move to perfect bill number two ten.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two ten is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number three fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold bill number three fifty-three and three fifty-three will be held.
Substitute bill number one for bill number one eighty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of substitute, substitute bill number one for bill number one eighty-seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wasinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one ninety-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one ninety-four is finally passed.
Bill number one ninety-five, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one ninety-five.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wasinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one ninety-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one ninety-four is finally passed.
Bill number one ninety-five, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one ninety-six.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wasinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one ninety-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one ninety-six is finally passed.
Bill number one ninety-nine, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number one ninety-nine.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wasinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one ninety-nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one ninety-nine is finally passed.
Bill number two hundred, introduced by Councilmember Wasinger. Bill number 200, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move for final passage of Bill number 200.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolen?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 200, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 200 is finally passed.
Bill number 201, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Before I take any action on Bill 201, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd appreciate a few moments to say a few words.
Sure.
It is with gratefulness, humility, and pride that I find myself the elected representative of District 6, the site of Jefferson Barracks, and with the opportunity to have this body consider the expansion of that hollowed place. Before I do so, I believe it is appropriate to take a moment to reflect on the significance of this place, not just to St. Louis, but to our country. Many people know Jefferson Barracks as a national cemetery, as indeed it is. The cemetery was established after the Civil War in 1866, and both Union and Confederate soldiers were buried there. But the barracks was also a military post cemetery beginning in 1826, which is why you will find within its confines graves that predate the Civil War. But there is much, much more to the story. Jefferson Barracks is the oldest operating military installation west of the Mississippi River. The barracks was an active military garrison from 1826 to 1946, 120 years. Over the course of its 120 years of active operations, within its citadel, some of America's greatest warriors and protectors of our liberties either began their military's careers there or were stationed there. A short list might include generals who later became president, Zachary Taylor, Ulysses S. Grant, and Dwight David Eisenhower. Young officers who later became generals, William Tecumseh Sherman, Robert E. Lee, James Longstreet, and Hap Arnold, the only soldier to ever hold the rank of five-star general in two branches of the military, the US Army and the Air Force. And then there's Albert Berry, who in 1912 became the first person to successfully parachute from an airplane while flying over Jefferson Barracks. Impressive as that is, that list tales in comparison to the thousands of unsung warriors whose final posting is Jefferson Barracks. Men like Lieutenant Michael Blasty and Sergeant James Odom. Michael Blasty, a 1970 graduate of the Air Force Academy, died on May 11, 1972, when the A-37 Dragonfly he was piloting was shot down near Anloch, South Vietnam. Prior to the identification of his remains, Lieutenant Blasty served as the unknown service member for the Vietnam War, buried at the Tomb of the Unknowns at Arlington National Cemetery. Today, Michael Blasty rests at Jefferson Barracks. Excuse me. Sergeant James Odom was a flight engineer and a turret gunner with the 15th Army Air Corps. On December 16, 1944, while flying a mission into Germany, Sergeant Odom's B-24 Liberator bomber went down in the Alps. Because of the remoteness of the crash site, for many years Sergeant Odom and his crewmates were entombed near their destroyed aircraft until they could be returned to the United States. Sergeant Odom left behind a young wife and two toddler sons. He never came to Shepherd. Like Lieutenant Blasty, Sergeant Odom's final station is Jefferson Barracks. Ironically, General Hap Arnold conferred a citation of honor on Sergeant Odom. General Arnold's words are applicable to all who rest at Jefferson Barracks. In part, the citation reads, "He lived to bear his country's arms. He died to save its honor." He was a soldier and he knew a soldier's duty. His sacrifice was so that millions, yet unborn, know the priceless joy of liberty. Few places are as storied and hollowed as Jefferson Barracks. Today, we are offered the opportunity to add to this hollowed ground by conveying to the Department of Veteran Affairs a portion of Silver Springs Park for the expansion of the Jefferson Barracks National Cemetery. It would seem that this decision would be an easy one, but the great thing about our democracy is that the people have a right to be heard, to protest and voice opposition to proposed actions of their government. Such has been the case with the sale of part of Silver Springs Park. This council has heard from all sides and there is great irony at work here. Evelyn Beatrice Hall penned the phrase, "I disapprove of what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it." Excuse me. This is where we find ourselves over this dispute. You see, there's no shortage of irony in the fact that the very people asserting the right to protest the sale of this parkland stand on the shoulders of giants buried at Jefferson Barracks, many of whom gave the last full measure of devotion defending the very right to protest that these citizens have exercised. With that, Mr. Chairman, I humbly move Bill number 201 for final passage.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
I just want to take a moment to thank Councilman Tracus for the obvious thought and research he did he put into making that prepared statement. And I think it shines a light on how important this issue is for our veterans and our community to show respect for them, and I appreciate you doing that. Ernie, you did you did a wonderful job, and I vote aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes, as a former, I was on the Veterans Committee when I was a legislator and formerly on the Missouri Veterans Commission by way of being on that committee and because I sponsored several pieces of legislation, especially for our women veterans. So I fully support veterans. There are several cemeteries throughout our state that are in disrepair and are unkept. And because we can do this here in St. Louis for the veterans, I'm very happy. And also have Veterans Home in my district that I've had for probably maybe 10 years in my district. So I'm glad I got to keep it when I became when I got on the council. But I very much support veterans and I think this is a wonderful piece of legislation. And I also thank Councilman Tracus, and I vote aye.
Councilmember Dolen?
Aye, and I'd like to thank all the veterans, those who are here and those who aren't, for your service. I'm a benefactor of your service, so thank you very much, and I vote aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
I too. Grown very close to to the cemetery. I've been honored to speak at the veterans' events in November of every year, and I would like to salute the tenacity of some of these veterans because the last couple Novembers I've said, "We're going to get this done," and it didn't get done. In this past November, I said, "We're going to get this done." And it's done. I vote aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 201, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 201 is finally passed.
Bill number 205, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number 205.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolen?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 205, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 205 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have two this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmembers Irby and Walton Gray.
I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolen?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Would you please read the would you read the first whereas and then the resolved clauses?
Resolution, whereas the St. Louis County Council is authorized and charged with the responsibility to, among other things, regulate all businesses in St. Louis County, collect taxes, oversee the acquisition of interest in real property, rent or lease county properties, establish procedures governing contracts and services, cooperate with the state of Missouri and agencies thereof for the operation of public facilities, grant permits, make rules and regulations as necessary necessary to establish, implement, and provide for the enforcement of provisions of this county charter and ordinances. Be resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the St. Louis County Council, recognizing its oversight authority and responsibilities, hereby formally requests and authorizes the council's ethics committee to investigate the practices, procedures, and operations of the St. Louis County Port Authority and Economic Development Partnership as said practices, procedures, and operations relate to or are concerned with the solicitation, award, negotiation, and execution of contractual agreements entered into by the Port Authority and the Economic Development Partnership for consultative services and the purchase and/or sale of real property.
Move adoption of resolution number two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolen?
No.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number two, there are six ayes and one no.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair, item number one, 3rd District. Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number two.
Hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number three, 7th District.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Item number four, 5th District.
Seeing foul, the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
And we have nothing under new business this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any comments by any council members?
Again, I'd like to thank the veterans that are here tonight and thank you for your patience to see this through for the last almost 10 years. And I'm glad that we were able to see this all come together tonight for the good of all your comrades and those to come after. Thank you again.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I want to thank the veterans for their service. I apologize for my emotion, but I have many friends that didn't come home.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, we adjourn.